...or even the subdivision ordinance, but it does go against the original ordinance that the developer came up with that said that O two buildings, the back of those two buildings are going to be closer to 25 feet.
Did anybody else understand that because I didn't? So now they're, now they're going to be 25 feet like our ordinance says?
They're going to, no, the ordinance doesn't say 25 feet. The developer's own ordinance for the zoning says 25.
Okay, what was our, we're gonna say?
It's, it doesn't address that type of, that particular issue. Your ordinance talks more about the setbacks around the perimeter of the property, not internally on the buildings. So that was part of the development plan.
Thank you. Well, maybe you can show what's on here.
Yeah.
I pictured worth a thousand words.
It's actually... These two lots right here. Yeah, that's it. And the, the PUD did say 25 feet, but just working to get these single family units on there, when that PUD was written, these were attached townhomes, like eight plexes, six plexes, four plexes. So we had a couple places here identified way back, this is 2005, when we brought that preliminary plat through. And this was one of them that was identified that this, from this corner to this corner is about 19 and a half feet or something like that. And you can see that beyond that, it's, it's well over the 25. It's just that one little corner. So that, that was the only issue, only data wasn't, it wasn't approved back in 2005.
It's only the overhang that protrudes into the 25 feet, is that right?
Well, there's more than the overhang in this case, yes.
Out of my reading, it was still 25 feet from building to building, but you measured from the overhang, it was 19.9.
There were two or three specific locations that were identified on that, on that plan, which I don't have with us, but on the approved plan, so it was, it was circled and called out. There was one there and I don't know where the other one is, but...
Yeah, I mean, and they had like big asterisks on it. We did go through that at the time of the plan, way back, like I said, in 2005 or so, when Plat 7 originally went through.
And that's, that 25 is, is back of building to, not, not side yard setback. So, you know, even in this case, it's, well, what exactly is the back? You know, if this is the, the backs really aren't even close to being 25 feet apart, but it was just a, it was just an awkward situation, I wanted to clarify, so.
Just like Ron, I think I'm getting confused as well. When you're looking at the, are you talking about those two townhomes that you're pointing at? Are you talking about the one to the left?
This, this is Plat 8 here. This is in Plat 11. So this is the one that we're addressing.
Okay, but when you're, when you're, I guess what I'm getting at is when you're pointing back and forth between townhomes, which two townhomes did that affect?
These two.
Because isn't the one to your left, they're a different builder?
Yes.
So should we, is it fair to...
He knows about it.
Yeah.
Is he a little bit?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, when Plat 8 went through, we even said, well, we can't do it yet.
I just want to make sure we don't have two builders.
And he's, he's got the same amended development plan.
Okay.
Yeah, good, good point, because we don't really, I don't want to come back and say, hey, you, you let different people, like, can I do this?
Exactly. All right. Okay, any other questions? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Item E, consider motion to approve resolution number 2016-09, accepting public improvements for Plats 9, 11, and 12.
Yeah, the, the public improvements, we wanted, constructing, essentially treating these as three, they're constructed simultaneously, so we observed and did one punch list and everything for Plats 9, 11, and 12. For the most part, 11 and 12, they're, that also includes some water main relocation, some adjustments to services because of, you know, different numbers of townhomes. There were some services that had to be abandoned because there were fewer services needed. And it also includes the extension of Wolf Creek Drive. That's probably the more, the most major improvement, public improvement that was there. So, and all those public improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications, city specifications, and they have provided the necessary maintenance funds for the paving and the utilities. And I guess that's where they, the sidewalks will be constructed with the building permits for each one of the individual townhomes. Developer has provided a letter saying they will install streetlights, so they, and actually that's a proposal that's been signed by Midland Co-op, so they're on the hook for that.
Take a motion.
Salute.
Second. Questions? Roll call please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries item E, consider motion to approve resolution number 2016-10, approve final plat for Wolf Creek Townhomes, Plat 11. Questions, comments?
All of those documented and ordered, as it goes.
Okay.
Salute. Sergeant.
Questions? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries item F, consider motion to approve resolution number 2016-11, approve plat for Wolf Creek Townhomes, Plat 12. Take a motion.
Salute.
Second. Roll call?
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries item three, consider motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2016 dash 100. Take a motion.
Salute. Sergeant.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries item four, consider motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2016-200. Motion? Go ahead.
Is there a reason why we'd have to do that?
Why we have to?
Couldn't waive the third reading.
Because we need a super majority tonight, and it was apparently, we definitely didn't have that. Oh, okay.
No, I just, this impacts everyone in the city. I think we should not go through the whole stuff.
And then that's where, and that's where we're at, so we're, it's already being out. So I need a motion on, for...
Salute.
Yeah. Second. Roll call?
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries item five, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016-300. Take a motion.
Salute.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sergeant.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries item six, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016 dash 400. Take a motion.
Salute. Second.
Roll call?
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries item seven, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016-500. Take a motion.
Salute. Sergeant.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries item eight, consider motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2016-600. Take a motion.
Salute. Sergeant.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries item nine, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016 dash 700. Take a motion.
Salute. Second.
Roll call?
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries item 10, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016-800. Take a motion.
Salute. Sergeant.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries item 11, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016 dash 900. Take a motion.
Salute. Second.
Roll call?
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries item 12, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2016 dash 1,000. Take a motion.
Approve. Motion to approve. I motion to approve. Second.
Roll call?
Mordini?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries, we only have to go through that one more time. Okay, item seven, just a couple quick things under Mayor's report. I went to the chamber meeting last week, made a presentation, just kind of the annual state of the city, if you will. My speech was slightly shorter than President Obama's, but a little bit better, I'd like to say. But anyway, yeah, I just gave them a quick update. It was well received and lots of good stuff going on with the chamber. I think they're gonna have another banner year this year. Actually, I've got a couple other groups that I'm going to speak to here in the next couple weeks as well, so it's kind of fun getting out to these groups first part of the year. Went down to Duane Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting last Wednesday. Interestingly enough, several communities in the metro are feeling some of the same issues that we have regarding field space and lack thereof, you know, increased enrollment, not enough field space, flat budgets, kind of common theme. But the Convention and Visitors Bureau is a fun group to be a part of, lots of good stuff going on in the metro. And, you know, they're doing their best to continue to promote our area, so I think it's worthwhile being a part of, you know, for the little contribution that we give them. Kind of as a piggyback onto that with the conversation regarding field space, had a meeting with a couple people from the North Oak United Soccer Club last night, as a matter of fact, down here. We're continuing on these discussions that we've been having since the failure of what happened today with the bond in August, and I anticipate those conversations to continue to be had, but I'll again say what I said then, which was there was no Plan B. The bond referendum didn't pass in August, and there's still no Plan B. And so we're encouraging all of these groups to be creative in their scheduling and various methods to deal with all of the incoming youth. That's all I have. Mr. Mordini? I would just, you know, add on to what you said. Some people have said, why don't you do this, why don't you do that? Just a reminder of history there, about four years ago, we didn't have a pool in the votes. At that time, many people said, if you have the pool, I would have voted for it. So we did it again with a pool, and now they're saying, well, if you didn't have a pool, I would have voted for it. You know, the public has spoken two times, and if you consider all the school votes, more than that, so, you know, we followed their lead, and that's what we're doing. And I want to follow up, just to say that we're, you know, we're doing our best to work together, be positive, have open dialogue, open communication, but, you know, there's a challenge that it's gonna be on, some people figure out. And, you know, and it's been brought up before, but I'll just say it again, it's not that any of us up here wouldn't like to do new fields and new anything, but we only have a, a certain amount of money in the pot, as I've heard it explained to us. And there's many people asking for the money out of that pot, and it can only go so far. So since none of us up here, to my knowledge, are willing to raise taxes on everybody in town, I don't see that changing. Anything else? Thank you. Councilman Sargent apologizes, he can't be here, he's out of town with his family. Mr. Anderson?
No, I'd just like to echo what Rob said, agreeing with him that, yes, we want to move forward, yes, we want these things to happen within a city, but we need cooperation because of just what Rob said, the money isn't there. We have to make the most of what we have with our money.
Perfect. Mr. Lane?
I ask for this two-page thing to be put in the back, just to bring everybody aware that this is getting to be a greater and greater concern among the people managing trails and bikeways with America's with Disability Act. You can't deny people access to it that are on some motor-assisted type of a vehicle, but yet you have to make sure that only those that really need that are using it and they're, you know, if somebody's just not taking a H2V down a trail to drag a deer out or something. But the whole thing is if you don't have a policy in place, you don't have anything from which you can deny people or say, while you're doing it or whatever. So as we consider trying to get a trail all the way through town, we need to be thinking about putting together a policy similar as this. What they do is that they issue actual, like a license or whatever, permit to, to be on there with that type of a vehicle. And so if you don't, if they don't have that permit, then they're jacked off the thing, but, um, shut up. Um, so anyway, like I said, this was just more to bring it to your attention.
Sounds good.
So it's something to be, to be thinking of, and that you can't ask them why, you know, as long as they have a doctor's thing, you can't deny them the access, so. It occupied the entirety of our last bicycle collective meeting, and it most likely will the next one as well. So it's a big concern.
We could probably do that even before any trail was even built. I mean, couldn't it just be a blanket policy for any trails going through the city, both city?
Yes, yeah. I mean, this is a blanket policy for anything that's on, for conservation managed lands.
Can we instruct staff to get that drawn up for approval later?
I think so, but what I was marrying to ask, and I'll probably have to talk with Rob, Sarge, I think if there's one that's being put together by the MAC, so it treats everybody the same way, would probably be a better way to approach this. So I, when Rob gets back, allow me to talk with him. He can bring it up and see if we can get a model ordinance out of the MAC that all communities can adopt, it's the same thing.
Perfect.
Agreed.
The only other thing I had, and I know I've brought this up a few times, and I know we're sending these out electronically, not making paper copies for everybody anymore, but I don't know about the rest of you, but I really do not need that level of detail on the Snagger bills. There's 28 extra pages that could have been cut out of this packet. Somebody would have had to stand and feed them into the copier. I don't know if all of the rest of you like to have that level of detail, I don't really like to micromanage at that level.
I'm okay, as long as whoever normally reviews those doesn't have any questions. I think they're probably doing it in good faith for us, but I, I see what you're saying.
Would be happy to, Dr. State of Town, so. The consolidation in the bills as well, I believe we had 10 individual American bills, you know, they used to be all totaled up, both have just one line item, and it used to be alphabetical order, made it a lot easier to go through, just observations.
I'm fine streamlining, as long as somebody before us is responsible for, you know, less than.
Well, if you will do and add all 28 of those pages up to make sure it totals, no, because I, I assume people are able to do that, so that's why I say I don't need that level of documentation.
I think from the bill standpoint, I think is what it's, since it's, I see what you're saying, it's categorized by department rather than, I, I guess what you're saying on the minute or anything.
We'll see what we can do to minimize those.
Anything else?
That's it. My opinion, like I said, is...
Thank you, Dan, because it took me a couple hours to memorize those.
Mr. DeBorak?
I have nothing this evening.
Excellent council discussion. Anything else to add for the good of the cause? City administrator report?
One item tonight, Mayor. We have with home serve, there are 38 contracts that have been out, that have been issued, 35 is water line, three is sewer line. No one has taken interior plumbing yet. Most of these have been purchased through either our website or through the direct mail, phone, both of those are at 42 percent, and telephone, who they called in, is 16 percent.
We were, but we put this here, they, they sent us this.
They sent that to us.
I, I like, I love this, so, because it...
They did?
Thank you.
Were you did that?
I just really appreciate that level of detail, because you like, you like the colors.
You like the pretty colors.
Colors are good. You know, disutilization, because we, we pushed for, you know, we, we said, hey, everybody wants, everybody wants it, and I think this is just a sign of, people did, didn't want it.
and I think this is just a sign of, people did, didn't want it, and they're probably on point of edge.
I was just gonna say, I hope the majority of those people live down in a certain area.
People in that area were very nervous to get this in place.
All right, move on, yeah.
Uh, no, you're not.
Attorneys' report?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Engineers' report?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Works' report?
Nothing.
Technology Report?
Just going to say a quick update, we had forty-five video views for that last council meeting. The majority happened on the actual day that we went live. There was a couple remainder views or post-vues after, on the fourteenth and fifteenth. So, just kind of keep you up as a rest of that.
Impressive, I, I remember.
Can I say hi to my kids, because they're probably watching me, because they were clicking on the website, and I just remember. Not to deflate your forty-five number, but, you know, I'm just saying, my kids were all excited about the YouTube thing, so. I don't, apparently I'm a tuber now or something like that. Thanks, Jake.
Well, I did receive a couple comments from people, said they enjoyed it, they thought it was informative. They, they just, they liked it.
And that's what, we'll just continue to try to make it better and better each time we stream, so.
And Jake, I know I'm beating you up about this, but I look forward to when we're doing P and Z and part of the, part of these two.
Yep.
Looking forward to it.
Looking forward to have that in place.
I did notice that the couple that was coming here all the time, and that they said they'd rather watch it on their computer, were, they were here last meeting, but not tonight, so.
I'm Bob in Burbank.
That's who I had a phone call from, she said, she thought, she thought it was great, I have to get out.
It's still on Netflix?
It's not been released yet.
Well, I understand, we're right up there with Star Wars.
Good job. Fire Department, wow, that was impressive. Fire Department, floor, anybody here, Police Department?
No, we're in court.
Library, nobody here, citizen liaison, nobody here, I would take a motion?
I just have...
Oh, whoa, one more thing.
Quick question for Roger. In the past meetings, we've authorized some hiring of part-time people, but I've never heard any feedback if they accepted those positions, do we have them hired, or...
Both of them have, and we've, we're, we're to the point where we just need to get them in here and have them sign WTDs and stuff, and they're ready to go to work. One of the officers has been in, done four hours of training with us, and we've got most of the uniform and equipment purchased, and they're, they're ready to go.
Okay, thanks.
Is that what some of us have seen right around, two men cars, is that probably him, or...
Probably, you may have seen the reserve, he was out last weekend. But this, I think this guy would have been in plain clothes.
And is there any prognosis for more, or we're, is anybody else speaking, or to come in with them? Well, I didn't, I didn't know if there's any other candidates out there yet, so.
Not yet. I'm gonna say it, lost my train of thought here. I'll think about it a minute, I'll say.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Joe Cyclones? Okay, I'm playing Kansas tonight, I sold...